Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you would find your seats. We welcome you to tonight's Planning Commission meeting, February 7th. The time is seven o'clock. Roll call, please.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Waters.
Here.
Mr. Horn.
Present.
Ms. Mies. Mr. Dalton. Mr. Oaks.
Here.
Ms. Henderson.
Here.
Mr. Harker.
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would, join us for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to my country, to the United States of America, to the Constitution, and to the Constitution of which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Hearing of the citizens, is there anyone here tonight to speak to this board about any issue that is not on our agenda or who has not already signed up?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Horn.
I think we would be remiss if we did not express publicly our condolences to a fellow colleague of ours, HF Haymore. He lost his brother Ronnie day before yesterday. The funeral will be tomorrow afternoon. HF was a colleague on this Planning Commission, and I'm sure everybody in the county knows him as the clerk of the court for many, many years. But HF lost a brother about six or seven months ago, and now he's lost a second one. So I just think we need to publicly express our condolences to the family.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Horn. Our thoughts and prayers are with HF. Approval of the agenda.
I'll make it motion, Mr. Chairman.
The motion by Mr. Dalton is our second.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Waters. Please cast your vote. Agenda has been approved. Mr. Oaks, sorry. Okay, now the agenda has been approved. Seven yes, one absent. Approval of the amendments, do I have a motion?
Before we make a motion, Mr. Chairman, I've got one issue with the minutes.
Yes, sir.
Since I was not a member of the board, in December, I abstained from voting to approve the minutes from December. And it shows eight zero in the caption above the grid. My vote to abstain was recorded correctly since the sentence above it saying it was approved, eight zero, it was actually seven zero.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Webb. If the, if the, did you, did you get that?
Yes, I did. We got that, and we will correct those in the minutes.
Okay. Do I have a motion with that correction?
I have a motion. I'll put forward a motion to approve the minutes from that change.
Okay, motion by Mr. Webb, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Henderson. Ready for a vote? Mr. Webb, if you would, make that motion on the screen. Minutes are approved. Seven yes, one absent. Chairman's report, just real briefly tonight, I wanted to just commend the staff for the great effort they take each month to get our board prepared and ready for the different cases that we have. Tonight, we have a full house and we have a full agenda. So I would encourage anyone coming to speak tonight, please speak up loudly through the microphone so that we can hear you. We greatly value your, your opinion. I would also remind you that, that this is a recommending board. Whatever decision we reach in either of these, any of these cases tonight, we have a redundancy in place, whether it be the BZA or the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your patience tonight, as we do have a lot to get through. At 7:05, I'll read the precepts, and we'll open this for public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance, we, the Planning Commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance and to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning and Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all of our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes' time. At 7:06, case R-23-001 is open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-001, Riceville Baptist Church has petitioned to rezone 4.0 acres located on State Road 640, Riceville Road, in the Banister Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for cemetery on, for a cemetery on joint church property. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a member from Riceville Baptist Church is here to represent the petition.
Do we have a member from Riceville Baptist Church? Nope. Anybody else here to speak to this case? Okay. Then at 7:07, public hearing for this case is closed. Ms. Henderson.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of 23-001 for Riceville Baptist Church, I'd like to make a motion that we do recommend to the Board of Supervisors that this case be approved.
Motion by, motion by Ms. Henderson, is there a second?
Second.
We're ready for a vote. Motion carries, seven yes, one absent. At 7:08, case R-23-002 is open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-002, Joseph Harrison has petitioned to rezone 0.67 acres located on State Road 622 Cascade Road in the Tunstall Election District from B2 Business District General to A1 Agricultural District to allow for two dwellings on the property. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Joseph Harrison is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Harrison, will you come forward? Good evening, sir. You can stand at that podium right there. Do you have anything for, for this board that, that's not already included in our packet that you'd like to say?
No, no, sir.
I'm sorry to make you, make that long walk down here, I'm sorry. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Harrison? Okay, thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, thank you all.
Okay. I don't have anyone signed up to speak to this case. So at 7:10, public hearing is closed. Mr. Oaks.
Mr. Chairman, in case R-23-002, I'll make a motion that we change the zoning from B2 to A1.
Motion by Mr. Oaks is there a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Dalton. Thank you. We're ready for a vote. Motion is approved. Seven yes, one absent. At 7:11, case R-23-003 is now open to public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case R-22-003, Thompson &amp; Wyatt, has petitioned to rezone 87.278 acres located on State Road 1004, Pritchett Lane, in the Banister Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow the property to be subdivided. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Ronald Thompson is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Thompson? Okay. Yes, you certainly can. If you don't have anything to, to add to what we already have, that you don't, okay. All right, I don't have anyone else signed up to speak to this case.
I think you did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Come forward, sir. Mr. Harris? All right, sorry about that. Come on down.
I'd like to say good evening to the board.
Yes, sir.
I was, if this, if this is changed, what would that allow him to put on those, on that property?
Mrs. Ragsdale, do you have an answer for him on that?
So, under the A1 zoning classification, there's a list of permitted uses. Anything agricultural related would be allowed if he were to do what was considered intense agriculture, so a dairy, a log, large hog farm, meaning he had over a certain number of hogs. These are all very high numbers, so 30,000 chickens laying hens would all kick him into intensive ag. So there are additional setback requirements and things like that. But any normal ag could be on the property without a dwelling and anything, any uses listed under that, that section, which I'd be happy to provide you a copy of.
Well, under that, I would oppose that this rezoning be done. It's one, it's a dead end, you would need another outlet, so I'm opposed to it.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. If you'd like, yes, ma'am. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Marie Richardson, and I'm the secretary of Thompson &amp; Wyatt. Mr. Thompson is with me, though.
Okay.
But what it is, it was 106 acres, and we want to divide it into four tracts to make it more sellable. The first tract has a 100-foot entrance into it. The other three tracts only have like 60 or 50 feet, and according to the regulations, R1 has to have 75 feet.
I see.
And there's houses on both sides of the ingress egress, so we can't widen it. Agricultural, the 50-foot is enough. They aren't going to put a pig farm, thing like that back there. It's just like, so one individual could buy it and build a house on it, and it's just so you can get in and out of it. And we could sell 30 acres better than we could sell 106.
Okay.
So that's the reason for dividing it.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions while, while we have her here?
Any questions?
What would be the plans for the, the acreage where you said would be like a 50-foot entrance?
I didn't, I'm sorry, I can't.
What would be the plans for the acreage that you said would be a 50-foot entrance, if I understood you correctly?
Right, in other words, there's a strip of land into each tract that was left years ago when they built the subdivision back before I came to work there, which was over 38 years ago. And we've added two parcels to it, where it's made it a total of 106 acres back behind these houses. And to make it more desirable for people to afford, we figured it would be better, I think one tract's 19 acres, one tract's 30 some acres. We've just split it up into four, and those, they, at that time, they were future streets, but, you know, they're not going to put a street in. It would just be a driveway to whoever buys that tract. Right now, there are no plans to do anything. We have, you know, it's not sold, there's no plan, we have no plans to do anything on it, just to sell it. But we can only divide it if it's agricultural, because we only have the 60 or 50 feet of property to going into the tract.
I have a question, Ms. Ragsdale may be able to answer. If we, or if we recommend rezoning of this property so that it can be easily sold, or easier to sell, and it's zoned A1 agricultural, and I buy a tract and I want to build a house on it, now I've got to rezone it back to R1 residential, do I not?
No, you would be allowed to build, A1 allows for stick-built, modular, single-wide, and double-wide.
Okay.
So you could place any of those on that property.
So I could get away with the, the width of the entrance?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, you could still build on it, it's just that, a 50-foot would be your driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got a question too.
Mr. Oaks?
From, from Ms. Ragsdale. If, if anybody buys it and they want to do anything out of the ordinary other than, than have one dog and maybe a horse or something like that, they would have to come back and get a special use permit to do anything that would be of hindrance to the neighbors.
So they would be permitted to do any use listed under Section 35-178. That would be permitted by right, there's nothing that we could do to stop them from those uses. A1 allows for agricultural uses on the property without a dwelling. Any residential zoning classification allows for incidental ag. You could still have ag on the property, it just couldn't occupy more than five acres, and it couldn't be objectionable by noise, odor, dust pollution, et cetera. So, R1, you could have ag uses, A1, they're not as restricted, and you have more agricultural uses that would be permitted by right. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I just.
Along with some additional permitted uses that we would not be able to stop them from doing.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the public knew that if somebody did buy it, they couldn't go in and, and do anything they wanted to without having to come back to us.
Depending on what it, depending on what that use was.
Yeah.
If it's under Section 35-178, they could without coming back to you all. If it's under Section 35-179, they would have to come back and request a special use permit, and it would come before you all and then go to the BZA.
Ms. Henderson, did you have a question?
Yes, I would, Mr. Chairman, like to have a little more clarification. You're saying that you want to go from R1 to A1 merely for the fact of making it more sellable, if that's a word? Maybe this is for Ms. Emily. Is there another zoning that could be granted that would prevent, because there are lots of uses here? So I do see the gentleman's point, and once we do it, you know, it's kind of out there.
The short answer is no, and that is because R1 and ours other zoning districts have a minimum road frontage requirement within the zoning ordinance. A1 does not require road frontage unless it falls under the subdivision ordinance, which says if the tract is cut three times creating four lots. So they will be falling, this is in a subdivision, this is a residual piece from a subdivision, so it does fall under the subdivision ordinance, therefore they have to have 50 feet of road frontage on a state-maintained road. That is the least amount of road frontage of any of our zoning requirements, and that is only because they fall under the subdivision ordinance on top of zoning.
All right.
All right, thank you.
I do have one more, just for the sake of looking at both sides of the coin, about in this area as far as residential homes, how many homes are down there now? Yes.
On Pritchett Lane, I've never counted them, but I would say there's between 50 to 75.
Okay.
On both sides of the street.
Okay. Yeah, because I haven't received any rebuffs to it.
I had two phone calls.
Right.
And one guy lives over on the other side, doesn't live on Pritchett Lane. And he thought we were going to put a subdivision in, the way he read the letter. And he said, well, if y'all don't already have your street plans, I know they like to do cul-de-sacs. He said, I'd like to talk to them about not doing that and bringing it on over to my property. I said, no, we are not doing a subdivision, we're not putting any streets in. And so I explained to him what we were doing, he was fine with it. And I had one resident there that we built the house that I worked with, and she just was questioning it, and I explained to her, it was just so we can subdivide it, because it's harder to sell 106 acres to one person, where we could sell to four people. That's all we're planning on doing, is just so we can record the math.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Okay. At 7:22. Oh, he did? I'm sorry. Come, come back forward. Mr. Harris, if you don't mind, yeah. Mr. Harris, did she answer?
Pretty much, but determined not to see me today. But, but we was concerned about that, some property on the other side was up for sale one time, and somebody wanted to put a pasture over there for cows. So it wouldn't be nothing to stop them, whoever bought that tract, to put in a pig farm or horse pasture or cow pasture back there. And like I said, we just, in the neighborhood, would not want anybody to put anything like that back there. And several folks that were not able to be here tonight, that voiced their concern as to opposing this to, so just, not only just me.
Right, okay.
Just the whole neighborhood.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harris. Now, at 7:23, public hearing is closed for case R-23-003. I believe this is you, Colette.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of R-23-003, I'd like to make a motion that we do recommend to the Board of Supervisors, the zoning of this, of these, this parcel of land.
Motion by Mrs. Henderson, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Oaks. Ready for a vote? A motion carries, seven, four, one, absent. At 7:24, case R-23-004 is open to public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-004, Danny Daniel has petitioned to rezone 0.053 acres located on State Road 834 Jones Mill Road in the Tunstall Election District from A1 Agricultural District to R1. from A-1 Agricultural District to R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to consolidate with an adjacent property zoned R-1. Once the property is rezoned to R-1, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash two-two-two are permitted. Staff summaries and close in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Danny Daniel is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Daniel, do you have anything to add that we don't?
I'm here to ask any questions, you guys.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Daniel? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Daniel.
Thank you.
I don't have anybody on this case signed up to speak. So at seven twenty-five, public hearing is closed for this case. And this is Mr. Oaks.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, in case R-23-004, I make a motion that we change this from A-1 to R-1.
Motion by Mr. Oaks. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Webb. Okay. Ready for vote? Motion carries, seven yes, one absent. At seven twenty-six, case R-23-005 is now open to public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-005, Jessica Purdue has petitioned to rezone six-point-zero acres located on Chaney Store Road in the Dane River Election District from RC-1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District to allow for the placement of an accessory structure. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash one-seven-eight are permitted. The staff summaries and close in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Jessica Purdue is here to represent the petition.
I'm good.
Do you have anything, any information for us that's not already in the packet?
I do not.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Yes, ma'am. At seven twenty-eight, public hearing is closed. The floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of this rezoning.
Motion by Mr. Horn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Henderson. Motion carries, seven yes, one absent. Case R-23-006 is now open to public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-006, Robert and Virginia Matheson have petitioned to rezone twenty-one-point-six-five acres located on Robin Ridge Court in the Stanton River Election District from RPD Residential Plan Development District to A-1 Agricultural District to consolidate with an adjacent property zoned A-1. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash one-seven-eight are permitted. Staff summaries and close in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Robert Matheson is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Matheson.
I'll speak.
I don't have anybody signed up to speak for against this case. Is there? Okay. At seven twenty-nine, public hearing is closed. Mr. Waters.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to the Board of Supervisors that we recommend approval of case R-23-008.
Motion by Mr. Waters. Is there a second?
Excuse me, zero-zero-six.
Case zero-zero-six.
I'll second.
Motion carries, seven yes, one absent. At seven thirty, case S-22-024 is now open for public hearing.
Do what?
Mrs. Ragsdale.
It should be twenty-three oh-oh-seven, R-23 oh-oh-seven.
I'm sorry. At seven thirty-one, public hearing is open for case R-23-007. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-007, Triple S Farms of Ringgold LLC has petitioned to rezone three-point-three-seven-six acres located on State Road six-fifty-five Tom Fork Road in the Dane River Election District from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to B-2 Business District General to allow for a commercial parking facility and the repair of trucks. Once the property is rezoned to B-2 Business District General, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash three-six-five are permitted. The staff summaries and close in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Jason Swearingen is here to represent the petition.
Good evening, sir. Do you have anything you'd like to add to the discussion? Okay. I don't have anyone signed up to speak to this case. So at seven thirty-two, public hearing is closed.
Sir?
Yes, you can speak. I'm sorry. Come back, come on down. Please state your name.
My name is Brenda Cobbs. I live on State Road eleven-oh-five, Johnson two-six-fifty-five. And I'm truly against the trucking company, you know, putting a trucking company there along with some other of my residents.
At seven thirty-three, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Horn.
Recommend that we move to send to the Board of Supervisors approval of this rezoning for Mr. Swearingen.
Motion by Mr. Horn. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Dalton. Please cast your votes. At seven thirty-four, case S-22-024 is now open to public hearing.
We skipped one.
Triple S again. I'm sorry. We're going to get to that case here in just a little while. I know that's why everybody's here. Case R-23-008, Triple S Farms again. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-008, Triple S Farms of Ringgold LLC has petitioned to rezone sixty-eight-point-seven-six-four acres located on State Road six-fifty-five Tom Fork Road in the Dane River Election District from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District to allow the property to be used for agricultural purposes. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash one-seven-eight are permitted. The staff summaries and close in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Jason Swearingen is here to represent the petition.
Anything you'd like to add? Thank you, sir. Would you like to come back up? You don't have to. I'm just, now's the time, if you would like to expound upon your concerns.
Yes, my concern is the highway on those highways, it's not acceptable for big trucks. It's, the highway is just, it's just not suitable for big trucks or anything.
Okay. This is a state-maintained road, is that correct?
It is.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. All right. Thank you. Anybody else? At seven thirty-six, public, one more.
My name is Charles Logan, and I would like to know, when is all this supposed to take place? That's one question. And like the lady just said, on Tom Fork Road, State Road, they are small, and that is going to cause some kind of construction or everything.
I'm having a hard time hearing you. Could you pull that microphone down? There you go. Thank you.
Okay. Like I said at first, like.
I'm sorry, sorry. Can you restate your name for the record so that we can make sure that we have it on record and can hear you?
My name is Charles Logan.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you, sir.
First of all, I'd like to know, when is all this supposed to take place?
When is what?
When is the construction of this?
The petitioner can come back up and answer that question if you'd like.
Okay. And the second thing is like, Tom Fork Road, State Road, you know, all the way down where I live at, Wichita Road, those, you can't get a truck and a car by each other passing, and they need construction. And I'd like to know when is all this supposed to take place?
Okay. All right. I'll have the gentleman come up and see if he can give us an answer as far as the timeline. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
His questions seem to be around timeline and.
Timeline, we're looking, hopefully, first of June.
First of June.
Of this year. Yes, sir.
All right.
Everything. The quicker we get it approved, the quicker we'll get started.
Right. Okay. This road is not a dead-end road, is it? It's a state-maintained?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I met with the, you know, the State Department, and they said that they didn't see any problem with it. All this took place, we bought the land because one reason it adjoins our family farm that's on Fifty-Eight. We've family-owned for fifty, sixty, seventy years, you know.
Right.
And we're not going to have a junkyard. We're not going, you know, we try to keep our stuff nice and neat and clean. And we understand the traffic also with the State Department saying that he didn't see a problem with a safety issue because of the fire trucks coming in and out. They've bigger, not as big, it's not bigger than some of our trucks coming in and out.
Right.
It's just, you know, I understand his concern. It'd be a concern, you know, mine too. I live right up the road also, you know, a couple miles up the road. And, you know, I feel like my kids travel. I feel like it's, you know, safe. No higher rate of speed that any trucks going to get from coming Fifty-Eight, off of Fifty-Eight, up the Ringgold Road, and taking a right onto Tom Fork. And we will be entering the property at the corner of Gunn Garland and Tom Fork.
Gotcha.
So it's, you know, it went, it was, if it was, we thought it was a viewing problem, you know, it couldn't have been done.
Right. I'm assuming you went to VDOT and had to go through entrance permit.
Absolutely.
Yes, okay. All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Sir, sorry, a member of this board has one more question for you. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm asking this question only for clarity, for the questions that were asked.
Absolutely.
And my husband's a trucker, so, you know, I'm kind of.
Sorry to hear about that.
Yes. But just because those questions and concerns were raised, maybe, so would these be pretty much just power units there, or would be truck and trailer?
It will be trucks and trailers.
Okay.
You know, that was one of our things too, is we rent so many different spots and trying to get everything to our home the way we can keep a handle over it and keep everything under one roof for safe. So like I said, we've got three or four properties, and we sitting there thinking, man, we could, this is a mortgage payment, so trying to get everything back under one roof at one establishment, you know. And like I said, it's three acres, so not really that big. It's not like it would be strode everywhere, you know.
Okay. So one follow-up question. How many units are there approximately?
Fourteen units.
Fourteen units. Okay. Okay. All right. And I'm just assuming they wouldn't all be dispatched at the same time, so it wouldn't be all continual.
A lot of the trucks, the employees actually keep it at their homes. We own our gas station on Riverside that everybody's supposed to fuel that, and it's a lot of people. It wouldn't make any sense for them to bring the unit all the way out there. Would still be at their lot, you know, in the city of Danville, so.
Okay. Oh, good.
It's just, we're trying to give a upfront, worst-case deal, you know.
Okay. So for clarity, and I'm just saying this for the good of the people, so when those units, these, the drivers are going to be having their vehicles primarily at their home and gas and off-site, so it's not going to be a lot of in and out. Okay. Sounds good.
Yes, sir.
All right. Hope that helped out. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak to that case? Okay. At seven forty-three, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, if I may clarify, ladies and gentlemen and fellow commissioners, we're not talking about this three acres rezoning for the trucking. That's already been voted on to send to the Board of Supervisors. We're talking about rezoning this R-1 Residential to A-1 Agricultural. And I've been there for forty-five years, and it's always been farmed. I don't remember, I never knew it was zoned R-1 Residential. So this is what we're voting on now, is the sixty-six acre, sixty-eight acre tract to A-1 Agricultural. And in that case, I recommend that we send to the Board of Supervisors approval of this rezoning to A-1 Agricultural from R-1 Residential.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Motion by Mr. Horn. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion. Richard Mottigay.
Mr. Waters. Second by Mr. Waters. Thank you. Cast your votes. Motion carries, seven yes, one absent. I'm going to call for a ten-minute recess, and we will come back. I'm gonna call for a ten-minute recess, and we will come back.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I could, the time is 7:57. We will resume our, our meeting if we could have, have silence and everyone find a seat. Thank you. I would just say for anybody on, on the board that needs to take a recess at any point, just speak up, okay? Thank you. Thank you. At 7:58, case S dash 22 dash 024 is open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case S dash 22 dash 024, the Dock at SML LLC has petitioned for a special use permit on four parcels of land totaling 23.25 acres located on State Road 626, Smith Mountain Road, and Locust Lane in the Callens-Gradna election district for a marina and a public garage. Staff, some reason closing the board packet, Mr. Chairman, a representative from the Dock at SML LLC is here to represent the petition.
Okay. Good evening, sir. Please state your name for the record, if you would.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Wilson, representing the ownership group for the Dock at Smith Mountain Lake. Just want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission members, county staff. Appreciate you hearing our request this evening. Our case, as you are aware, it's in your packet, page 102. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review it. Also got a couple of slides to show, printed out some hard copies if you need to view those as well. We are here to request your approval that our marina property would become a legal conforming use as a marina under the current RPD zoning. This has been a commercial marina property since 1966, one of the first, if not the first, marina on Smith Mountain Lake. And as a marina, we fall under the jurisdiction of AEP in providing public access to Smith Mountain Lake. I'll refer you to the slide and your handout on page two, which references the AEP Shoreline Management Plan and the goals of the plan to provide public access to Smith Mountain Lake. Currently, we're grandfathered in as a legal non-conforming use, even though it has been a commercial marina since 1966, and the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance didn't begin until 1991. Staff has made the determination that in order to do any waterfront improvements, modifications, or add boat storage, we must have a special use permit. In essence, any expansion or modification to the marina would require becoming a legal conforming use, meaning if we simply desire to add one single boat slip, this county determination says the special use permit is required. We are not in agreement with this determination. Our current RPD zoning allows accessory use by right, meaning without a special use permit. Clearly, boat slips and boat storage are accessory uses to the property. Nonetheless, this county requirement is what's brought us here this evening. So this case is not about adding more boat slip, boat slips specifically. It's not about adding boat storage to the site. At its most basic level, this is a request that a marina, which has been a marina for nearly 60 years, continue to be a marina under a legal conforming use of RPD zoning. So we're thankful to be at this stage of the process, to have recommended county staff approval. We are, however, requesting your recommended approval of this application with the removal of the first three conditions as noted by the staff. Condition one, Smith Mountain Road be used as the sole access to the property. We have had many discussions with staff, neighboring property owners, engineers, DOT, lawyers, in regard to access to our property and maintenance of Locust Lane. I'll refer you to the next slide and information in your packet, which shows a property survey, site plan diagram. Want to make sure we're all working from the same page of the property, the property lines, and the access to the site. You'll see Smith Mountain Road on the diagram. You'll see private drive access named Locust Lane. You'll see the access to the marina property, and you'll see the marina parcels. Most notably in this information, you'll see that Locust Lane is within our property, meaning we own this private drive access. We have been asked to reach an agreement regarding access to the marina and maintenance of Locust Lane. We've met with the neighbor, neighboring property owners in person, on site, virtually, through email correspondence, phone calls. After hearing from the neighbors that they wanted us to have a new entrance to the site, or they wanted us to maintain Locust Lane, we have proposed and advised that we'd do both. We'd one, install a new entrance to the site off Smith Mountain Road, as shown in the site diagram. And two, we would assist in maintenance of the private access road, Locust Lane. It should be noted that there is a legal, longstanding, recorded document that addresses access and maintenance of Locust Lane. This agreement states that we, the Dock at SML, are owners of this private access road, and we grant rights to other neighboring property owners to use the roadway. In exchange for granting this access, the neighboring property owners are to provide, are to provide, one, annual payment, and two, the neighboring property owners are to maintain the private roadway. Part of this access and maintenance agreement is shown in your handout and on the screen. Of note, this access and maintenance agreement is from 1986, 20 years after our property was a commercial marina property, meaning precedent had been set that this access was for a commercial marina use. Additionally, we see no evidence or documentation or information that the neighboring property owners have done any maintenance to the private access drive. So these points show that including a condition that Smith Mountain Road be used as a sole access to the property is not in line with our request for a recommended special use permit. We've been asked to come to agreement with the neighboring property owners regarding access to the site and maintenance of Locust Lane. Access and maintenance provisions are already in place, in addition to the new solutions we've offered of installing a new entrance to the site off Smith Mountain Road and assisting with maintenance of Locust Lane. We can and will install a new entrance, but we cannot agree to a punitive condition that removes a longstanding legal access to the site, and ask that you would strike this condition in your recommended approval. Condition number two, Locust Lane cannot be used as a construction entrance. Construction entrances are determined and defined at site plan approval stage. We are simply seeking approval to be a legal conforming use marina under RPD. If and when we get to submitting for building permits, we'll be working with the county on appropriate construction entrance designations. We are more than happy to repair any damage to Locust Lane from construction equipment, but this condition that Locust Lane cannot be used as a construction entrance is not in line with our request, and therefore ask that you would strike condition number two from your recommended approval of our SUP. Condition number three, again, some handouts for your review and in your packet. Condition number three states the current no wake buoy must be maintained, and we must apply for and secure an additional no wake buoy. This condition has nothing to do with Pennsylvania County jurisdiction, nor this SUP application approval. This is a component of operating our marina that has jurisdictional oversight with AEP, TLAC, and DWR. That being said, we have already installed an additional no wake buoy in the cove at the marina. It's pictured here where the second buoy has been placed, and this documentation has been provided to county staff, therefore ask you to strike this condition from your recommended approval. In summary, we are a marina. We've been a marina for nearly 60 years. There are many things in place to regulate and oversee marina operations within the framework of providing public access to Smith Mountain Lake. We've gone above and beyond in responding to county staff and neighboring property owners, and done so on many components that are not even directly related to this special use permit application. So we're asking for you, the Planning Commission Board, to recommend approval of this request with the removal of these three conditions that are not applicable to our property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have quite a few folks signed up to speak. Meg Racanelli.
Hello, all. I live on Locust Lane.
Can you, can you state your name, I'm sorry?
Yes, my name is Amy Smitherman. I live on Locust Lane. I provided, I've had a stroke, so I provided you all a copy of what I'm going to be reading tonight and sharing with you. But anyway, we have a little bit of a different tale. So over two years ago, this board, in good faith, granted a variance for a marina for less than five acres, so the Dock at Smith Mountain Lake could deal with AEP. Now they're requesting a special use permit for a 12-acre marina and 11 acres for dry stack boat storage. Those two features represent the entire tract. The last time we were here was in April of 2021, when the Planning Commission tabled the Dock's SUP application until the May meeting. Your minutes from that meeting say the reason that it was tabled was so that the ownership group and the adjacent property owners can come to meet and discuss concerns and come to an agreement regarding the maintenance of Locust Lane. They also were asked to share a sketch of their intended project. At the 2021 Planning Commission meeting, Jeff Wilson stood right here, and he was told of our concerns. You all asked him what he could do. He said, "We'll go ahead and get some gravel down, or fill in the potholes, or work with the neighbors of Locust Lane." Andy English and Jeff Wilson met with the neighbors in late of August 2021. Jeff Wilson shared that they were working with an attorney on a road maintenance agreement. He offered to send it to us for the neighborhood's review once the draft was complete. That is the last time that I'm aware anyone from our neighborhood has spoken to Jeff Wilson or Andy English despite our request. At this meeting, they also shared a rough draft of their development concept. This is what he's showing with you tonight. This is the first time we saw the scale of their planned project. Truthfully, we were taken aback by the size and the scope of the public boat storage and the absence of anything residential. As you know, after the board tabled that matter for one month to the May meeting, the Dock at SML never came back. I assume that table of motion is still in place, I don't know. But now, 22 months later, they're here again with an entirely new application for the exact same proposal. I don't understand, it seems like a game that they're playing, while the county has accepted this application for uses that are not allowed in the RPD zone. When you buy a lot, the very first thing you do is you ascertain whether you can get water and sewer. You also find out what the property is zoned. These are the basics. An RPD is a residential planned development zoning district. The Dock at SML LLC has owned this property for almost three, three years, yet they're still fighting, or I should say ignoring, what is allowed in the RPD zone. So now they're seeking a special use permit for a non-conforming use. And from what I understand, a non-conforming use cannot be expanded unless it's brought into compliance with the zoning district regulations. This application does not comply with the RPD zoning district. I also understand they haven't worked out how to do with their sewer yet.
Ms. Smitherman, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I'm over about three minutes.
You are, your, your minute over. If you could just quickly summarize, thank you so much.
Okay. So they haven't worked out the sewer yet, they still have porta jogs. It tells me that they are not interested in doing any residential uses, and they are not here, I mean, they are not doing what they need to do with the RPD. So unfortunately, we don't trust anything that they're doing, and we don't think you should, to come before our, our community and our neighbors, to come before you, to come before staff, and work with them, and still not be honest in what they're doing.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Meg Racanelli.
Good evening. First of all, I just want to say we're one of the newest property owners on Locust Lane. We've been there about two and a half years, so we've been involved with this since it's been going on. We have nothing against the Dock. We, we like the marina there, we like the fact that it's bringing an economy into Pennsylvania County. What we're mostly concerned about is the information, the application about the garage or the boat storage, as well as again, being against the, the use policy, it's a residential neighborhood. We have collected over 200 signatures, petition, that I'll present to...
I'll tell you what, if you can, yeah, give it to Emily and she'll pass it. Little over two minutes.
We collected this petition because we're opposed to the, the large scale of the development, and most of all, the application that they presented does not comply with the zoning ordinance comprehensive plan, and my, my feeling is that you need to recommend that, and vote that, and to deny the special use policy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mike Racanelli.
Gentlemen and ladies, I'm a little bit more of a pro boss than most people. Can you hear me okay out there?
Yeah.
All right, great. Good evening, committee members, appreciate your time. Obviously, you know, we can agree that time is very important to all of us, obviously, and, you know, it's running out on us. So if you would just, just bear with me just a few moments, I'll go through, through this as quickly as I can. Can you still hear me out there? Okay. The Locust community have taken the time again and again to entertain this company's request again, and the idea or thought to even allow to develop in our community impinges and disrupts our community. Not only impinges and disrupts it, it does not comply with ordinances and the comprehensive, the comprehensive plan. And we bring this, this request, and we bring this request up again, impinging on, again, our time. This is time, I had to travel out here, it's time, gas, and we have this gentleman, again, approaching us with a different situation. Anyway, the community does not wish to have a company president, president in our community that are less than good neighbors. They've proved that, time and time again. I'm saddened by the fact that the event that took place off my dock, which, which had the loss of two lives, I believe, and this was in the off-season. So members understand that the addition of 100 more boats to be parked in our backyard is definitely out of question. That is a no by me, a no by me, a no by me, okay? By this, community members, to make it clear, members in addition will increase utter disregard for safety of the members of this cove, which is me and several other people up and down the cove. In the busy part of the season, let me tell you, okay, this grows increasingly dangerous out there. Let me reiterate in case it was not clear, no, no more boats.
Thirty seconds, Mike.
How many?
Thirty seconds.
And we shall, we are, we definitely do not want any of that in our backyard. Again, as mentioned earlier, this application does not comply with the zoning ordinance or comprehensive plan. We, the community, request that the members must recommend and deny the special use permit be turned down. Thank you for your time, again, time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Root.
Ronald Root, 373 Locust Lane. Thank you for your time tonight. In your package, you should have a draft, a letter that I put together, was, I think has been handed out, and I'm going to paraphrase that letter, because this, this is going to be a long evening anyway. Several problems with this proposal. First of all, the property is zoned RPD. This is not a residential, there's no residential package or part of this package, first of all. Secondly, is the road maintenance. Yes, there have been two meetings with the owners on two occasions. Then that was followed up by a, a email to me saying they were drafting a road maintenance proposal. That has never occurred. We have had no further conversations with these people about road maintenance. There's been a long history of, of this road. The road's basically been maintained by, by the neighborhood, and this also demonstrates that we have a history of working with, with the neighbors and keeping the neighborhood in good shape. That has not been the case with these owners. Our, our, the site plan, we've really, really never had a look, a detailed look at this site plan. So our conclusion is that the tabling of the earlier proposal really didn't work, and I think it's about time that you help us collectively stand up and deny or reject this application and this, this proposal until we can try to work with it. It's been long, difficult, and painful.
Thank you, Mr. Root. Mr. Chuck Bates, I know you're signed up, but I think you signed up on the wrong page, I'm assuming, right? Mike Murray.
Good evening. Thanks for taking your time to hear us talk about the proposal they proposed. You know, they've talked about Locust Lane. My name's Mike Murray, I live at 5110 Smith Mountain Road. I'm right on the corner of Locust Lane where the sign is, so I see everything coming in and going out, so. I've been, this is my fifth year that I've been on Locust Lane, and we have a boat in the marina, in a covered, one of their covered lifts and everything. So I have a little background on what goes on down there. There's not much maintenance that goes on for the roads inside of the marina, just not the, the Locust Lane one. But when they, they stated that they would help put rock and gravel on the road in 2021, that's never happened on Locust Lane. And like I said, even the roads inside of the marina are terrible. They got, they come in this way, and then you go up a hill. The one up the hill, you can't even make it unless you really got a four-wheel drive because it's so bad. And talking about having boat storage, maybe 100 to 400 boats, right now, on the busy weekends where my boat is, I have a hard time getting it out right now because it's so crowded around the marina, with people getting gas and everything. I can just imagine them coming in, putting boats in the water, especially on the weekends, and parking. I have a hard time finding a place to park to get to my boat. So it's, the plan just won't work for us, and I think our recommendation should be to deny this proposal because it's not good for our residential area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lloyd, and I'm sorry, Lloyd, I don't... Lloyd, if you would, state your last name when you come to the podium there.
It's a Scandinavian name. My grandparents were born in Finland, my folks born in this country. It's, it's, to say it in the Finnish way, it's Ruona, you gotta roll it all, but it's, I, I just go by Ruona, R-U-O-N-A. Lloyd Ruona. I live at 341 Locust Lane. I live at 341 Locust Lane. I live across the street from the marina. And I'm probably the closest host to the marina because several of you people probably remember Comer Shield. Well, Comer was the septic system man. And we had, we bought this land in 93 or 94, and it was called, it was a fisherman's cottage. And they took the fish, when we decided, my wife and I retired there and we moved to there permanently and built a house. Well, we need the septic system. And where the old fisherman's cottage was, they had dug some kind of a dugout underneath the porch, and Comer would not allow them to put the septic system in there where they had planned because he said you couldn't do this with filter. Even though the septic system was deeper than what was in there, they wouldn't, he wouldn't let it have. So he called me up and said, "I accepted your system," but he said, "You lost a lot of trees." And I thought, "What's he talking about?" Because we had trees between my neighbors and my house. Well, they had to cut down all my trees to put the septic system over there. Where the septic system was, where the 800-foot mark is, where our well was, we got this little bitty piece of property and we're right on the road. And this Smith Mountain Dock and Lodge is right across the road. And from the plans that I've seen, it looks like a parking lot for them is going to be right across from my house. And I'm concerned about the sounds and the noise. When we moved there, Rick and Holly Munson were running the marina. We had a very good relationship with Rock, and we had a very good relationship with everybody on the road. And then when the Holcoms took over, we also had a relationship with them. The new people, we don't have a relationship with them. In fact, we wonder what kind of relationship we have with them. Is it adversarial? Are they keeping us in the dark? Are they treating us as country bumpkins? I don't know. But I know that it's, RPD is residential, and what they want to do is all commercial. I just think, I hope that you guys, and I want to recommend that you deny this.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Janice, if you would, state your full name.
Janice Wiles.
Wiles.
Good evening. I'd like to thank, to talk about the proposed plans and how it would affect the community of Tanglewood Estates and waterfront residents of Locust Lane. First, let me say, we are not against economic development in our little area of the lake. We do want the dock to succeed, but as a residential community, according to plans approved by this planning board in 2006. In the three years the dock has been overseen by Mr. Wilson, the dock at SML has not been a good neighbor. There have been significant issues with blatant disregard for the no-wake zone. The manager of the dock, Chris Baker, is observed often with large wake leaving and returning to the dock, even with renters he is instructing. Often, residents from both sides of the cove have used an air horn, whistled, or shouted "no-wake" during these incidents. Mr. Baker responds by going faster while giving the finger to those to get him to slow down. One particular scene unfolded when a resident on Locust Lane, directly across from our lot, shouted for Mr. Baker to slow down as he went by their dock. Mr. Baker backed up the pontoon boat to be beside the dock and proceeded to shout foul obscenities. His yelling could be heard throughout the entire cove. In this instance, the verbal assault continued until Mr. Baker pulled down his pants and mooned the individual who was on the dock with family and friends. After this incident, all the employees at the dock began wearing T-shirts that displayed "no-wake" all day. I understand they also tried to sell the T-shirts to raise money for Mr. Baker's attorney costs related to an assault charge against him when he pushed a neighbor of the dock into the water, and thank goodness, the gentleman could swim. There was no way for him to get out. My brother has gone to the dock to ask for the owner's contact information. Mr. Baker told him he was trespassing, and if he didn't leave immediately, he would call the police. My brother is no longer allowed on the dock at SML's property, along with five Locust Lane residents and two from Tanglewood that have been banned by Mr. Baker. This is not the atmosphere desired for our community. During the summer, when boat traffic is heavy, there are times when the cove is crowded with boats waiting to get gas at the dock, as well as people swimming, kayaking, and paddleboarding. There is no safe way to introduce hundreds of additional boats to our cove. We are a residential community with residential zoning. This property was zoned residential long before the dock at SML purchased it. This application does not apply with the zoning ordinance or the county's comprehensive plan. Please recommend denial of the special use permit.
Thank you, Ms. Wiles. William Pass. William? You did, okay. I have a, Thomas Pace?
Case.
Case. Okay, same thing, good. Oh, let's see. Jessica Taylor. And Mrs. Smithman's already spoken. And I'm butchering these last names because I can't, I can't read.
It's the number, like the number.
Okay, how are you?
Four, yes. Anyway, I am Debbie Four, and I live on Locust Lane. In fact, I live at the very end of Locust Lane, and I may be one of the, I've been there 21 years. So I've been through more than one dock ownership during this time. I do have a handout here to, that I'm gonna have you...
Are they all the same?
They're all the same, yeah. Anyway, as we've said in the past, I mean, the marina can be a great thing to have there. I mean, they, they have always been good neighbors, and I've been there for a long time. We were pretty excited when this group purchased it three years ago, just about three years ago, not quite, because the first thing that they did was tear down a bunch of the derelict buildings that, to be honest, needed to come down, and got kind of excited that they were going to start putting, and then they did discuss with us some of the plans of what they were going to do. And of course, that's kind of changed course completely from what the first meeting was that we talked about. And now it seems like they're pretty much just concentrating on trying to get the special use permit. And I know that when Mr. Wilson got up and talked, he said, "They're not looking to do anything with adding docks or the storage or anything right now. That's not what the meeting's supposed to be about. It's supposed to just be about the special use permit so that they can, I guess, start doing some things to it." But it does include a lot of boat storage. And according to what their application, of the 23.25 acres, which are the RPD, 10.52 are boatyard, boat storage yard, and 12.73 is marina. So there's not really anything there for resident. What I just passed out is, my concern is, I live at the very end. If you look at the drawing, I'm the house on the very end. The cove is very narrow there. There's already probably 50 to boats in there, and what they're looking to do is add boat storage. The first picture shows you what it would look like. At one time, I don't know, it was discussed possibly 400 boats. That shows what that would look like. In the second picture, Sanctuary Village is going to be adding 55 docks over there, too. So it's going to be even more boat traffic than what's currently there. So this just kind of gives you an idea, I think, of what they're looking for for boat storage. And this is what we're looking at.
All right, thank you.
In our little cove, so, thank you.
Hello, George Nederiga, 261 Locust Lane. As Debbie said, you kind of get an idea of what 400 boats look like in dry stack storage. We've had men, you know, a couple of meetings since around August 2021 regarding road maintenance, things of that nature, and we still have yet to see a proposal from the dock regarding road maintenance for Locust Lane. In fact, one of the red flags that, you know, he presented today is that if there are already access and provisions in place for the dock to have Locust Lane without our approval, that's the first we've ever known of it. We have never been presented with any evidence that they have exclusive rights to that section of Locust Lane. So that's, that's the first one. Do they even care about the impact of their commercial development on Locust Lane? I mean, they're spending a lot of time planning the development around it. And from what I've seen, if this is approved by this board, it's going to be like building a hornet's nest right in the middle of our community. From the vehicular traffic, the construction traffic, you know, excavators, dozers, you know, it's going to be like a bunch of horns coming up and down. We gotta, you know, we gotta address that. And then when they build this up to scale, you know, not only vehicular traffic, all the parking that's associated with, with this development, there's going to be tons of boats going in and out of the cove, and, you know, on top of all the people coming in and out. If I were keeping a boat there, you know, I'd probably bring three or four family members with me to get the boat. You know, you talk about 400 boats, and if everyone, you know, is taking their boat out on a, on a busy weekend, try multiplying the number of boats by the number of people that might show up at that facility. And it's going to be a gross imposition of, of commercial development in this quiet community. What are the plans for, you know, for protecting the environment? You know, who's going to change the oil on all these 400 boats? Where's all that going to go? The fuel, expanded fuel docks, you know, that type of thing. Heck, when I was at, you know, on a busy weekend, when I go there and get gas, you know, if we're going in three boats wide, it's already pretty crowded, you know, and they're going to add all this additional traffic. The cove hasn't gotten any bigger. You know, how many more boats? You know, I, I thought it was busy before this expansion, to be honest with you, on a busy weekend. I'm glad my kids won't be swimming, you know, in the waters right off of the dock, like on the, off the waters of Tanglewood Estates. I'm sure the owner's kids won't be swimming there. It's going to be a huge safety hazard with the increased traffic. I think that, you know, please do your job and consider a balance here. It's got to be a better balance here in this neighborhood. And I recommend that you guys deny the special use permit.
All right, thank you, George. Is there anyone else here to speak? You're the last one, that's right. Robin Lester, come forward, please.
Hello. My name is Robin Lester. I also have a house on Locust Lane. And I'm going to read mine because I'm nervous. With all due respect to all involved and my neighbors on Locust Lane, I'm not in agreement with many of the objections that have been presented here tonight. I am in favor of the dock at SML. I want to see it prosper. I want to see it renewed. I want the services that they're striving to provide to the community and vacationers. And I can assure you, there are many in Pen Hook who are in favor of the growth in this area and this marina. When, when I, when we first bought our house on Locust Lane, I would often take walks. Part of my path was a walk around, it was called Smith Mountain Boat Dock at the time. It was very disheartening to me to see it in such shape. It was extremely old, rundown, dirty, and just very unpleasant to the eye to put it nicely. However, what I could see was the potential that this marina possessed. As I walked, I would pray that God would put it in the hands of someone who also saw that potential and make it a great marina. And I'm not making that up. I literally prayed that quite often. I prayed for someone to come in who had a vision to make it a marina that was pleasant to the eye, a place where people could purchase, retail, eat up, at a nice snack bar, enjoy a nice restaurant, as well as enjoying boating options, a place where you were not embarrassed to take your friends and family, because I literally was. Far too long, our side of the lake has been lacking amenities. I believe an upgraded marina that offers nice docks and cabins and boat rentals and storage, maybe a restaurant and retail, would be a huge asset to our community, as well as the county. More than likely, property values would increase. Now, we know the county loves that, right? Y'all were supposed to laugh. Anyway, who doesn't want restaurants and revival? Finally, we have an investor with a vision who wants to begin the process of improving our area, and unfortunately, they have been rejected every step of the way. I've been to some of these meetings that they have had with the people on Locust Lane, and they were very respectful. And I will say, I don't want to make anyone upset, but they had their hands full with the people on Locust Lane. Anyway, I...
Robin, your time, your time has expired, Robin.
Oh, can I have one more minute?
Just real quick, real quick.
I'm in complete disbelief of the opposition that the investors and employees have been faced with. I imagine a lot of things that they, that have been mentioned here tonight that have not come to pass is because the dock at SML is probably a little unsure of their future because of the uphill battle they've had from day one. And here they are, once again, later attempting, once again, to get a permit passed by the county. Just as I previously stated, that I was for the plans of the dock at SML, the dock at SML is also for the community. They're not out to disrupt, hurt, hinder, or argue with anyone. They simply want to upgrade, renew, and rebuild.
Robin, thank you. Would you come back up, sir? Thank you. I'm going to give you a few moments to address some of those things that were brought to our attention, if you don't mind.
Couple of responses to some of the information you were just presenting. And I don't want to go to all of it. Most of it's been addressed in our application and in my introductory remarks of our intentions, our plans, where we've been, and what we're asking of you this evening. Most of what we've heard tonight is regarding Locust Lane, access and maintenance. The other side of the equation of what you've heard tonight is boat traffic. Increased boats, wakes in the water, more boats in the water. The cove hasn't gotten any bigger, understandably. And first, let me apologize if we've inferred to any neighbors that country bumpkins, it's only because we're country bumpkins as well, so.
Okay.
In regard to Locust Lane.
If you would.
Access and maintenance.
If I could interrupt you for a minute. If you would, just address this, address us on this board, please, not the audience. Thank you.
We've addressed the questions on access to the property with the provision that we're going to install a new entrance to the site off Smith Mountain Road, removing the concerns that have been expressed about Locust Lane. In regards to the waterfront, increased boat traffic, again, this is an AEP Shoreline Management Plan jurisdiction. There's information in your packet from AEP which further designates this information. I'll just highlight some of that information for you. Appalachian has reviewed preliminary plans for the development of dock structures along the shoreline and determined that the existing and proposed uses within the project boundary are generally consistent with the shoreline classifications established by SMP. Appalachian notes that commercial uses are already established on the upland property and existing dock structures are currently associated with an established commercial use. Appalachian does not object to your efforts to seek Pennsylvania County zoning approval. Appalachian already considers the shoreline adjacent to the subject property to be appropriate for high-density commercial uses. So we just refer back to the most basic request that we've been asked to talk with neighbors about access and maintenance of Locust Lane. In response to that, we provided multiple solutions, mainly being, we're going to install a new access entrance to the property off of Smith Mountain Road. We're more than willing to help neighbors and maintenance of Locust Lane is needed, but the new access to the property off Smith Mountain Road by default comes the primary access to the site.
Okay, so, does anybody have any questions? Who wants to go?
I've got some comments, Mr. Chairman. You got some?
I do, but you go for it. You go ahead.
Mr. Wilson, thank you for being here. And I want to thank everybody that spoke tonight on all their concerns. What I'm hearing, the biggest concern is that driveway going in off of Locust Lane. I had made a site visit myself all the way to the end of that cove. Locust Lane is the entrance going in there, and it's in pretty good shape the day before yesterday. But as you go into that neighborhood, it's pretty rough. And I know you don't have nothing to do with that, but either way, I just went to the end and turned around, pretty much like going down to a logging road. Gullies and washed out and mud holes and whatever. But either way, a lot of the people were saying they want an agreement on that road. And we can't stop fire and rescue and public safety from using that road in emergency situations. And I understand you all own the road, and I know you have said y'all want to put this new entrance in. I agree with all of that. I don't like the no wake, because as a board member, anybody here, we have nothing to do with Smith Mountain Lake on no wake buoys. That hat, that's something the applicant needs to apply through TLAC, and then it goes to DWR for final approval. We can't make approval of a no wake buoy or no surf buoy or nothing else. So the buoys, that don't really need to be in there. That's what I'm recommending there. I heard the gentleman say, one gentleman talking about how busy it used to be. I can remember back when Rick Munson and them had the water slide. You couldn't even get up there on Friday and Saturday night. It was so many vehicles. I guess they got along for everybody. They were there a long time. Oh, I would love for this thing to, the neighbors and you all come together. I mean, any personal issues, we can't solve those, but come together, be great for the community in that development. It's an economic development improvement for the community. Pennsylvania County does not own very little shoreline on our side. Everything goes to Bedford and Franklin County. I mean, I'd love to have a little bit of that revenue coming to Pennsylvania County. And I don't think as a board member, on my board, would say they wouldn't want some revenue coming in a right way. It'd be nice. Oh, I, I mean, I'm for it because I see it as a positive thing, but I'm also, I, I heard the concerns of the neighbors and all of that. If you can come with an agreement on that entrance there and put your road in separate, and like I said, I know we can't stop any emergency vehicles. I don't care who they are. Oh, but make this thing work, and it'll be a positive plus for Pennsylvania County. I don't want revenue that could come to us go to Bedford and Franklin County. I go on a lake. I have to get gas. I enjoy coming down that cove, getting gas from you all, because you own Pennsylvania County. You got lumpkins, you got Dicky D., and we don't have a lot on Pennsylvania County, so I, I can't go against, I'm not going to sit here and promote failure that I want you to fail, because I don't. I want you to be, make a positive investment. I want you to be good to the neighbors and everybody get along.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I had a couple, a couple of questions just regarding the, the staff recommendations. You're asking for some of these to be, to be taken out. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
The first one, Smith Mountain Road be used as the sole public access for the property?
Correct.
And part of your basis for that was that Locust Lane is, goes through, uh, your property, correct? You own the, the land. It's, I'm assuming it's an easement through there.
Correct.
For the residents of Locust Lane.
Correct.
Okay. I have talked with, uh, many of them, and really over the last year, but especially in the last couple of days. I have seven, uh, letters and three emails here, passed around a petition. I tend to weigh heavy on what the people that live there say about their experience so far. You were here a little over a year ago, April twenty-one, and we kind of, I, I don't know what's the right way to say it, maybe, maybe we did the wrong thing, maybe we should have dealt, dealt with this then, but we gave an opportunity for the two parties to sit down and, and come up with a, a road maintenance agreement for Locust Lane, correct?
Uh, not specifically. You did ask for us to come to some agreement with the neighbors on access and maintenance.
Okay. You're referencing this, uh, road maintenance agreement between Smith Mountain Dock and Richard Lee Munson, dated September twenty-fifth, nineteen eighty-six. I don't get the feeling that, that this is part of their deed, so I'm assuming that this is the first time a lot of them are hearing about that. There's no specifics in here as far as what the dues are, um, as far as when those dues are due, uh, whether you have a acting president or somebody, uh, enforcing or overseeing the, the road maintenance agreement and actually carrying it out and getting the maintenance done. Who, who has been doing maintenance on Locust Lane?
That's a good question. We'd like to know that as well.
So your company hasn't, your company hasn't done any maintenance on Locust Lane?
We have not. We've offered to help.
Okay. No, sir, I'm sorry. The public, you had your opportunity to sign up and, and speak. Yes. Those are just some concerns I have, kind of red flags as a developer coming in. If you're using that road, I live at the end of an easement road. We have a road maintenance agreement, not a HOA, and it, the ball gets dropped all the time on whose job it is to fill the potholes and that kind of thing. And it usually falls to whoever's the most willing. And I do understand from what Mr. Dalton stated is that the road's pretty good down to where it accesses the dock, right? Pretty good down to your business site. And then from that point on, down Locust Lane, it gets, it gets worse and worse. So that, that tells me two things. Most of the traffic you would think would be absorbed on that first part of that road, but it sounds like most of the in and out is by the residents going the length of Locust Lane. And obviously, the second half of that road is getting the most wear and tear. And I'm just saying it's more than likely their vehicles that are putting the, the use on the, on that road beyond your business.
I would agree.
Okay.
Yes.
The other thing was that, that you were asking to be removed was that Locust Lane cannot be utilized as a construction entrance. You're asking that to be removed from the recommendations?
Yes, sir.
How about number four, remaining in, in compliance with all applicable, uh, Virginia Department of Health regulations?
Absolutely.
Okay. Where, where do you stand today with the Department of Health?
Uh, that information's in your packet. The, um, CTO, Certificate to Operate from the Department of Health is in there.
Okay. And number five, I would agree with you, Mr. Dalton, that the AEP and the, the buoy, number three, I don't, I just don't know how we could, uh, step into that jurisdiction. It sounds like to me you're pretty settled. You, in other words, you're not willing to, uh, to bend much on, on this development.
I would disagree to that point. In, in the follow-up with the neighbors and the meetings we had with the neighbors, I would say you're correct in your assessment of that nineteen eighty-six maintenance and access agreement. There's no real teeth to that. The component of that is precedent of it being established in nineteen eighty-six was already a commercial marina in place and the timing of that and the uses of that. When we met with the neighbors, um, and had follow-up with the neighbors, and I have the email documentation on the follow-up from those meetings, proposed multiple solutions, so more than flexible. One, a new entrance off of Smith Mountain Road. Two, we will help maintain Locust Lane. Three, and this is more of a continual component, we'd like to work with you to get a new road maintenance agreement in place. Now, that is a very long-term process. There is no current Property Owners Association or formation of a group to help enact and get that road maintenance agreement in place. We have stated specifically in the response, in addition to our solutions provided, we feel they address the concerns previously presented. We also want to see if a road maintenance agreement specific to Locust Lane can be worked out. While the dock would administer and manage the agreement, we need someone to assist in taking the lead to help coordinate the communication with all involved. As mentioned, we've worked with, with an attorney to begin putting together legal language for such a road maintenance agreement, which would be a formal, legal, recorded document that outlines and constitutes maintenance and upkeep of the private drive and what roles and responsible parties would play and pay. This is a very long-winded process that we are more than flexible and open in working with them on. And we have said in the meantime, we want to be good neighbors and help maintain it. We've, we've had neighbors approach us on the property and say, hey, you've got a big pile of gravel on your site. Can we use it to fill in some holes? Yes, help yourself. We've done that. This is going to be a long-winded process to get to a new road maintenance agreement. Our request is, we can't be held hostage at this stage to move forward on a road maintenance agreement where we can't require the neighbors to sign and take action on. We put it out there. We've taken the initiative to put it before them. We need them to help follow up on it, but we can't make them sign something, and if they don't, continue to hold this application hostage because there's not a new formal road maintenance agreement in place.
Right. So it sounds like an effort has been made on your part to at least extend that, uh, that olive branch, if you will, to, to get the road addressed.
An effort far and beyond a hundred-and-eighty-degree turn from that nineteen eighty-six road maintenance agreement, yes.
So you've notified the residents of Locust Lane, either in writing or did you have a meeting? How did you, how did you reach out to them?
Uh, meetings, in person. We did a couple virtually because it was during COVID, um, onsite, followed up, email.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Any other questions?
I have a question for Ms. Ragsdale. Could you explain the RPD zoning to everyone here and to us, to everyone exactly what that states? And are they currently in compliance or not?
So the RPD zoning designation is a residential planned development district. Um, and what that means is it gives you an opportunity to mix residential and commercial uses within a residential district. You create a development plan, um, and then can construct to that. When the property was rezoned to RPD in two thousand and six, um, a plan was submitted at that time, um, showing residential. The applicant has submitted a conceptual plan in their packet, which you all have, showing locations of proposed residential uses. Um, and the comprehensive plan states that RPD and, um, traditional neighborhood design, which incorporates both commercial and residential uses together, is appropriate for the medium-to-high-density residential use, and it is appropriate, RPD is appropriate for that use as well. Currently, the public garage is a proposed use, um, or is a use allowed by special use permit under RPD as a standalone use. A marina is also allowed by special use permit under the RPD as a standalone use. The applicant did submit, um, a conceptual plan showing restaurants and some other commercial uses that would be, that would also require a special use permit, but only once residential was located on the property, as those commercial uses are not a standalone commercial use that's allowed by RPD. Does that answer your question?
It does.
I would like, like a comment or two. As far as the road goes, since the dock owns the road and the community uses it, you would think that the community and the ones using it would want to help maintain it. And, and like the gentleman says, we shouldn't hold up what they want to do with the dock because of the road. As far as the, uh, boat storage, it's, it's pretty rolling, going from the road down. It's going to take some grading. They're going to spend a whole lot of money so that people can enjoy the lake for people that can't afford a, a place at the lake. And so the things that I think we need to look at is, uh, having a border from the road, planting some trees shrubly so that it can't be, it hides a view of the storage sheds from the road, from the residential neighborhood. But it's, I agree with Mr. Dalton on what he says, that we want to see the dock prosper and, and keep the revenue in accounting. And I visited the site, I've been in the dock on a boat, and, uh, you know, with a lot of traffic, it's, it's, it's going to get tight in there at times, but we don't need to, to, uh, choke them down when somebody wants to make the dock better, improve it, and improve the, um, the lake around, rounded dock and make improvements for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At nine oh four, I, I'm sorry, man. I've closed the public hearing. It's, it's at nine oh four, we've closed the public hearing. At, at nine oh four, public hearing is closed. Do I hear a motion? Or is there any other discussion on this board?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, on the recommendations, Ms. Ragsdale. Uh, on the recommendations, Ms. Ragsdale, if it's something we want to take out, that we need to put that into motion and change it up for the record or what?
You would. You would need to state which conditions recommended by staff you would like to remove.
Okay. All right. I'd like to make the motion to approve this, to go to the BZA for approval with the conditions that there is an agreement on the, the entrance road between the applicant and the neighbors. I want to remove the no wake buoy. We don't have anything to do with that. And they already said they're going to build a new entrance, correct? Does that, need to add that in there too, falls a new entrance and everything be put in?
Um, yeah. If it's not listed in my conditions, you will need to add it. Are you, just so I understand, um, and we can clarify and get it right in a minute, you're taking out number three.
Yes.
Are you removing number one or modifying number one?
Yes. I want to modify number one.
Are you saying that you are requiring them to have an agreement, a road agreement?
Yes, so they can agree with the neighbors and everybody's happy using the road.
What type of agreement specifically? A road maintenance agreement?
I guess you call it a road maintenance agreement to keep the road up. Because, I mean, that road has to be used for, like I said earlier, public safety, fire rescue. We can't eliminate stuff like that. But, I mean, I think everything else is clear. I mean, must remain in, in compliance with the Department of Health and also with AEP on their regulations. Is anything else you need to? We good, Mr. Hunt?
Yes. So you recommend approval with removal of number three and a modification of number one to say, uh, that they must, um, work with applicant to have some form of road improvement?
Yes. That's my motion. All right, Mr. Chairman, that's my motion.
Motion by Mr. Dalton. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Oaks. Let the record show, motion carries, yes five, no two, one absent. At 9:08, case S dash 23 dash 001 Appalachian Power Company, Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case S dash 23 dash 001 Appalachian Power Company has petition for a special use permit on 0.34 acres located on Highway 360, Old Richmond Road in the Dan River Election District to allow for transmission line. The staff some reason closed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Christopher Screen is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Screen?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I, um, I'm actually Jonathan Schultis with Jacob's. Uh, Christopher Screen is in the application package, but I'll be representing Appalachia tonight.
Jonathan what?
Schultis. S-C-H-U-L-T-I-S.
Pull, pull your mic, pull, pull your mic down, sir. Pull your mic down so I can hear you better.
Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, could we let everybody exit before we start?
Yeah. Hang, hang on one second, if you don't mind, Mr. Schultz. Okay. Please continue.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So in the interest of time this evening, I did prepare a few slides, which are essentially redundant for the application package that you all received, research that information. I'm happy to go through them or I'm happy to be here to answer any questions that you have, whatever path you'd like to take.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Schultz? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak to this case. So at 9:10, public hearing is closed. Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send to the Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, approval of this special use permit. I mean, it's an upgrade to a system that's 95 years old. We've got to progress. We've got to, it's pretty much a no-brainer.
Motion by Mr. Horn. Is there a second?
I'll second it. I'm sorry. Go ahead. One, I think they got, Fred got it.
Second by Mr. Webb. Ready for vote? Let the record show, yeah, uh, seven yes, one absent in favor of the motion. At 9:11, case S dash 23 dash 002 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case S dash 23 dash 002 Hillendale Solar LLC has petition for a special use permit on 1,555.39 acres located on State Road 639 Honeybee Road, State Road 761 Streetstone Road, State Road 603 Watts Road, State Road 668 Cody Road, State Road 669 Mellon, and State Road 669 Mellon Road in the Bannister Election District and the Stanton River Election District for utility-scale solar energy facility. Staff some reason closed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a representative from Hillendale Solar is here to represent the petition.
Please come forward, sir, and state your name for the record.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Dan Michaud. I'm a, uh, project developer for Strata Clean Energy. Mr. Chairman, Ms. Vice Chairman, members of the commission, very happy to be presenting to y'all tonight. Thank you for having me. Strata has been working on this project for nearly five years. Our 23 landowner partners have stuck with us through the process. Many of them are here tonight. Uh, some are here to speak in favor of the project and have signed up to do so. Others have sent letters, uh, for y'all to, to read and, and, uh, consider their support for this project. And some, uh, are here tonight but are a little too nervous to come up and speak and, if it's okay for y'all, they asked if I could, um, call them out so they could just stand simply and, uh, demonstrate their support. Is, is that okay with y'all?
Any objection to that?
None.
No, no objection to that.
Okay. So if, if our landowner partners, uh, who would not like to speak, would, wouldn't mind standing up just to show that you support the project? Thank you. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
With me, I have a wonderful team, uh, including my co-development partner Danielle Walker. Louis Ionias here, uh, whom you may recall from the Berry Hill Solar, uh, SUP application. Uh, it was developed in partnership with the Danville, Pennsylvania Regional Industrial Facility Authority, uh, and it's located next to the mega site at Berry Hill. Sam Sink is here. He's our Vice President of Commercial Operations. He's an expert in solar project construction. Christopher Blanco is our Civil Engineer on staff. Kevin Seifert is Environmental Manager. He's an expert in environmental matters. And Development Associate Mandy Pitts is here. Uh, she's been camped out making sure that the signs that we posted, advertising of this public hearing, uh, didn't go anywhere, uh, over the last two weeks. Team is here to answer any of the commission's questions, uh, that, that I cannot answer. This team has also done a, a lot of community outreach, uh, throughout this process that I'll, I'll get to momentarily. So tonight's agenda, um, we'd like to do a reintroduction of Strata since it's been a couple of years since we, we came before the Planning Commission. I'll take a few minutes to go over the, the project and the community outreach that we've done. I'll touch on the benefits that this project will bring to the community, landowners and local businesses. Finally, I'll touch on some technical details of the site plan, how our proposal conforms to key aspects of, uh, the county's solar ordinance, uh, and the touch on the recommended conditions of approval. So Strata was founded in 2008. We're headquartered in Durham, North Carolina. Uh, Strata's a family-owned company that's grown to, uh, over 400 employees. We've been building and operating utility-scale solar facilities since 2011. We've constructed and continue to own and operate, uh, hundreds of facilities in North Carolina. Our reputation for quality work, uh, helped us expand into, into Virginia. Virginia has become a core market for our company. We've built 12 utility-scale solar projects, uh, across Virginia for Dominion, uh, ranging in size from 15 megawatts to 200 megawatts. Uh, we operate and maintain 35 facilities under contract with Dominion. These are the 12 projects we've constructed between 2018 and 2021. And these are the, uh, 10 projects that are currently under construction, all expected to, uh, begin operations between 2023 and 2024. We build mostly for, uh, Dominion in, in the Commonwealth of Virginia and we build mostly projects that were developed by others. Uh, and then we, we do develop some of our own projects, uh, which is what I'm, uh, what we're proposing for an SUP, uh, before you this evening. So it is a, a 102-megawatt, uh, utility-scale solar facility. It spans the Stanton River and Bannister Magisterial Districts. We have 12 parcels of land owned by 23 landowners totaling just over 1,500 acres. Of that acreage, we're proposing solar panels on about 450 acres. The rest of the land will serve as landscape buffers, uh, stormwater management facilities, preserved open space. We are in a pretty remote, uh, part of the county and there are some fantastic benefits to citing a project in this particular area that I'll, I'll touch on through the presentation. So back in the summertime, uh, before we finalized our permit application, uh, we sent project information out to surrounding landowners and invited them, uh, to an open house, which we hosted at the Hurt Motley Community Center, uh, on August 4th. Turnout was pretty good. We got a lot of good questions and, and had meaningful discussions, uh, about the project. After finalizing and submitting our application, uh, we sent a letter out to, uh, surrounding landowners, again with, with more information about the project, uh, after we had submitted our SUP application. We fielded several phone calls about the project and its location. Uh, a lot of people, uh, had questions about where we were installing panels and where that was relative to their property. Y'all are familiar with, with our industry. Um, this solar project will generate revenue directly to the county, uh, via siting agreement. Increased property taxes will create approximately 350 construction jobs. Will create significant opportunities for local businesses. Uh, we need a, a whole host of services to, to build one of these projects. Fuel supply, fencing, landscaping materials, uh, the list goes on and on. Uh, and, and it's one of my favorite things to do is, is to talk with local vendors about, uh, the, the types of services that we'll need. Finally, solar projects provide an opportunity for, uh, landowners to earn an income from a relatively passive use of their land once the project is operating. Pardon me. So we, uh, entered into a siting agreement with the county that was approved by the Board of Supervisors and the county will be paid nearly $9 million over the life of the project, uh, with a substantial payment, uh, substantial portion of that paid out, uh, prior to, uh, by the first year of operations. These funds can of course be used for, to fund county services, uh, finance capital projects or capital equipment, uh, or anything in the capital budget. This is our site plan. We have plenty of land to ensure that setbacks and vegetative screening, uh, are in compliance with the zoning ordinance. It's a very well-hidden site. Most of the properties have mature timber, uh, that is 25 feet or higher and we work with landowners to preserve these areas, uh, for screening so that, uh, we can minimize planting new, smaller buffers, uh, but rather preserve the existing buffer, uh, and clear inside for the solar panels, but leave what's there so that it can, um, preserve the rural character and, and put our panels out of sight. I said earlier, we're planting panels on about 450 acres, uh, and the rest will be stormwater facilities, uh, approximately 160 acres of, of stormwater facilities, uh, to prevent any off-site erosion, sediment discharge, uh, and then a significant portion is preserved open space. Uh, there's also wetlands, uh, in there and then, um, several hundred acres of landscape This is a view of the parcel boundaries with the solar panels, uh, in yellow. That is the fence line, uh, and the blue is, is the parcel boundary. So panels are set back 150 feet from property lines, 250 feet from any residential property line, uh, and have a 100-foot vegetative buffer and, as I mentioned, that is mostly preserved buffer, uh, and we're fortunate on this project to have, um, the, the mature timber in place for us to, for us to do an easy, quick buffer that's already there. Our substation, where we'll connect to the transmission line, uh, is located directly below the transmission line, so there will not be a need for any additional transmission, overhead transmission line to be built to connect and interconnect our project to the transmission grid. Staff has recommended approval, uh, of our SUP, uh, with a set of conditions which we support. Uh, they include staff's review and approval of our final site plan prior to any permits being issued to begin construction, preparation and submittal of a construction management plan, landscaping man, maintenance plan and viewshed protection plan for staff's review and approval. Roads are to be repaired to pre-construction conditions. We'll prepare an erosion and sediment control plan and post a bond. Also maintain a decommissioning bond and do annual fire and rescue training, uh, for first responders. With that, I'll, uh, invite the commission to ask any questions you might have at this time, uh, and would also request that we have an opportunity to address questions, uh, after the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
I have, Mr. Chairman, I have one. I have one of you.
Mr. Dalton and Mr. Horn.
Okay. Yes, sir. Only soil and erosion part of it, your, uh, retention ponds and stuff like, all of that will stay in place after the project is complete. Is that right? Because we've had some issues where stuff needed to be there and it was starting to, the contractor was, was removing it, but it should have stayed there. So that's one of my questions. Make sure we control the runoff and the water issues and the soil erosion after you're gone, after the project's finished.
Correct. So the, the quick answer to your question is, is yes.
Okay.
They, they will remain in place. Uh, they, they must be installed prior to any upland disturbance.
Okay.
So it's the first, uh, bit of construction that occurs once receiving a land disturbance permit, uh, and following construction, so, and they're built to accommodate the full... And following construction, and they're built to accommodate the full drainage basin once construction is complete. So they're there for the construction condition, and they're there remaining in place during operations.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waters.
Yes, sir. Are you currently have any solar facilities going in now in Pennsylvania County that you're working on? And if you do, where are they?
Yes, sir. We did not develop the Sycamore project, but we are the construction contractor, and so we are building the Sycamore solar project.
And where is that located?
It's in Gretna off Highway 40.
It's in Gretna off Highway 40.
Renan area.
All right. Thank you, sir. We have some people signed up to speak.
Thank you.
Mr. Bates, I'll call you up first. I know there were several of you that had signed up wrong. Once I get through these names, I'm going to ask you guys to come up.
Charles Bates, Gretna. This, my conversation is, is this is a Rube Goldberg scam all the way from the White House, all the way down to Pennsylvania County. It's across the entire nation. This particular plan is just like anybody else. And one of the things I don't think this board has realized is how much power it takes to generate this thing with the material that's actually being made. We're losing, as a forester and a wildlife biologist, we're losing habitat, we're losing forest land, we're losing our site index on things. The other problem we have is, like right now, it takes 10 acres of four straight days of sunshine to produce 1 megawatt from one of these panels, from one 10-acre field. This is a joke. It's a scam all the way to our country. We're getting stuck looking at the ugliness of these things around our county. How many people in here have flown over this county and looked at it? I've been flying over this county for 50 years. The reflection now is ugly. Driving down the road is ugly. I'm not in favor of any plan, not just this one, but any of them in this county. Wait until this thing collapses. Who's going to clean it up? Who's going to take care of the recycle of all the junk that's left out here? Looks like a prison when you ride down the road looking at this stuff. I don't think it's the benefit of this county whatsoever. It's not a benefit to this country. One of the nuclear engineers at BMW told me, "We have four empty slots at North Anna and Surrey. One more power unit there would solve all the power problems east of the Mississippi for 65 years." These are Rube Goldberg jobs. Follow the money. Plan, they spend $1, they get a $4 tax credit. Am I getting a tax credit? Am I getting any power out of this thing without my power bill going up? No. I'm asking you to not have any more of these in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bates.
Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening.
My name is Jeff Don. I live on 639, a couple of miles from where they proposed to build this. I object to the construction traffic. They talked about the project near Gretna off of 40. The traffic is ridiculous. Trucks pulling in front of you, and that's a much larger road than 639. I'd also like to know what direction the construction traffic is going to come from, if it's going to come from off of 40, or if it's coming from the Straightstone roadside. The reason I ask is there's a small bridge on 639 that goes over Buffalo Creek that will not handle heavy traffic. Speaking of Buffalo Creek, he talked about the runoff plan, and I'd be curious if, I know once things are in sight, that's fine, but when it's one big bulldoze scab of red clay, is that runoff, are they going to be able to keep that runoff out of Straightstone Creek and out of Buffalo Creek, which runs through my property? And I don't want the impact of that on the wildlife. You heard the previous speaker talk about the wildlife. Fencing off 1,000 acres or 500 acres is not any benefit to the wildlife out there, the deer, the turkey, or any other wildlife. And finally, just besides those two questions about the runoff in Buffalo Creek and the direction of the construction traffic, I just object to bulldozing hundreds and hundreds of acres of trees to put solar panels in. If you've driven out 40 and the area, out past Cody and Gretna, and drive by those red scabs where they're putting in the solar panels, it's disgusting.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Skylar Zunk. It's a pleasure to be back with you this evening. I co-founded a nonprofit called Energy Right with my co-founder Blake Cox, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our new colleague, Jacob Carisella, who just joined our team. We're a nonprofit organization getting out across the state, talking about clean energy development and encouraging it to take place the right way. I've talked to you all before. I'm not here to say anything new. I'd like to say a couple thank yous this evening. Thank you for advancing clean energy in the Commonwealth. As the biggest county in the state, you all have done just as much, if not more, solar energy, putting it on the grid, powering our homes and businesses than any other locality. Thank you. Thank you for respecting your landowner's property rights to use his or her land how they please, so long as they're not adversely affecting their neighbors. Thank you. Thank you for bringing economic growth in the form of solar energy to Pennsylvania County. It provides income for your landowners, increased revenue for local businesses, of course, tax revenue to help all citizens of Pennsylvania County, and also allows for some new and interesting business uses like grazing. I think you'll hear from a solar grazer here in a little bit. Also, thank you for learning from past projects. Thank you for continuously working to improve. You all have done more solar than many other counties, and other counties look to you all for best practices, look to you all for advice, and look to you all for how to do projects the best way. We want these projects to be the best neighbors possible for rural Virginia, and I really appreciate the county's diligent effort, both from the Planning Commission, BZA, Board, and of course, your staff. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the time. I've also spoken before, a couple months ago, a few months ago now. You know, I just want to say that I do support this project, the Hillendale project. You know, I've had several interactions with quite a few employees, actually over a dozen STRATA employees in my current work, grazing solar here in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I live here in Chatham, five miles from Climax, but unfortunately, all the projects that I work on are within a two-and-a-half-hour radius of here. When I started out trying to get the foot in the door on the projects here locally. So I think there's, you know, having additional projects here in Pennsylvania County provides this immense opportunity for furthering agriculture, whereas, you know, you hear a lot of complaints that the land's being taken out of production. You're not able to make any sort of agricultural use of that, and that's just not the case. It may not be their traditional uses here in the county, but there are new opportunities where we can build a brighter future for ag and create business sustainability for agricultural producers into the 21st century. You know, the average number of sheep in the Commonwealth per farm is really about 30, 25 to 30 animals. And I just want to use our operation as an example to illustrate the point that there are opportunities to grow. We are currently grazing over 2,000 acres of solar in Southside Virginia. We have, at this time, 430 ewes, that's adult female sheep, and so I use that as a unit of measure when I'm talking about stocking rates and stocking density on these properties because they vary based on past land use. Like this project is primarily forested, or at least production forest timber ground right now. And so as projects are developed, over time, they get better for sheep. As vegetation matures and ground coverage gets better, and we can use the animals to actually promote that condition. But, you know, the things you'll hear in the literature is they talk about, okay, you can put five ewes per acre. Well, that's just not the case in these systems, especially when they're initially set up. So, you know, it's better to understock. We can address some of the soil and water conservation issues. Biodiversity, I've spoken about in the past, about pollinator habitat, which is a wildlife use that could be promoted on these properties in addition to grazing. And so, like I said, we've been able to grow our business here in Southside Virginia, but I think there's opportunities to continue to grow, you know, with the amount of acres that y'all have already approved in Pennsylvania County. You know, the county currently has about 50,000 cows, to give you an idea. If we were able to graze the entire, you know, breadth of properties that were approved in this county so far, we're about 12,000 acres, y'all know that, I don't know who else does, but, you know, we could be looking at 40,000 sheep. So, you know, upwards of that many. So we could basically double the livestock in the county. That's an immense, you know, massive ability to build the economy.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak? Now's the time. Yep. One at a time, and state your name when you come to the podium, please.
Hello, committee. My name's William Case. I have been here before. To no avail, the sore eye that they're talking about is my home right in the middle of it. So if you want to see that sore eye, you come look at that sore eye. And I'll tell you another thing, too. I've been doing a little research on these solar panels. Do you realize by 192050, we're going to have 78 million tons of scrap? Now, there's two ways that scrap can be taken care of. Now, I thought we was going green, but this is destruction of habitat. You come and look at my place, you'll see the destruction. And yes, I am angry because the last time, I wasn't even heard, but I will make sure I'm heard this time. And it's nothing but a scam, just like my friend just said. This is nothing but a scam. To sit there and vote this in is the destruction of Virginia. And I hate to see that because I love Virginia. And I'll tell you, just, I'm sorry. I'm getting a little emotional because I've had to put up with this around, I don't know how many of y'all have, solar panels surrounding your home, but I do. I got to look at this, and I got to listen, I've had to listen to them for the past four years. And these little ponds they're talking about, they ain't much. Just go look for yourself. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Where you live, sir?
8496 East Gretna Road.
I'm sorry. I've had one other signed up, yep. If you don't mind waiting until he goes.
Good evening. I'm Joel Kathy. I live in Charlotte County on part of the land that is under consideration for the solar facility. I support it. Charlotte County has a fair amount of solar. This past year, we had our property taxes reduced. Everybody in the county had their property taxes reduced because of the benefits that came into the county from solar. Solar doesn't require, solar doesn't send kids to school. Solar doesn't have fire trucks come out. Solar doesn't create trash that has to be picked up. So it's a good opportunity for the county to get revenue without having to have services to back it up. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Now, Ms., and please state your name.
My name is Jessica Taylor. I live in Long Island, right off Honeybee. Sorry, I'm trying to pull my phone back up.
If you could pull that mic.
Yep, sorry.
Yep, there you go.
So I guess I just kind of wanted to point out, I live approximately 45 minutes from where I work. I do that because I like living in the country. I like the view that I get every day when I go home. I like, you know, living, I could easily live at a home, you know, 10 minutes from work and live in the city. But I live there because it's country. I see deer, I see bear, I see turkey, I see bald eagles near my home. There is bald eagle habitat right there on the river, right where they're going to put all these solar panels. I don't know if that's a big deal or a consideration, but I mean, we see them all the time right there. And I know that's few and far between. You can see them a lot down through Stanton River. I just think that everyone that lives around that, not everyone that lives around that area, but a lot of us that live around that area, the small landowners that don't have the land to just lease it out to these solar companies, we don't want to look out our window to see a bunch of solar panels. I know they're going to put, you know, trees, or, you know, they're talking about how they're going to be 250 yards or whatever off of property lines, but we're still going to see them in every direction. I don't live in the country to look out my window to see solar panels everywhere, and I understand I'm not a big landowner, so I can't control all of that. But I think that the long-term effects of this have yet to be really seen exactly what this is going to do to the land around us and the wildlife that take up the land around us. I know it's going to generate profit and revenue for the county. I know it's going to generate profit and revenue for the landowners that are choosing to lease their land out for this reason. But for the people that are stuck in these small landowner spots, I have a home there. I've lived there since 2010, and if I turn around and try to sell my home with solar panels in all four directions, I'm not going to get what my house is worth. When people know that there's solar panels out there, because the only pull to my area is that you live in the country. That's the only pull. We don't have a Walmart. We don't have anything, you know, commercial in that area. So there's nothing else to pull people into that area but the fact that you're rural and the fact that you're in the country. So it's going to affect me negatively when I try to sell my home, however many years down the road. And I think that's a big thing to look for when you're, you know, that's what you guys are here for. You guys are here for the people of this county, and to look at environmental impact, the impact to the citizens, you know, all of that as a whole. So that's basically why I say, please deny.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Please state your name, sir.
I'm Thomas Case.
Thomas.
I live at the corner of Straightstone Road and Honeybee, so they're going to be all around me. And that's the last thing we want. I go to my brother's house all the time, and all you see is solar panels up and down 40. That's all you can see from the road, and they say they're going to plant trees, but you still see them regardless. And the ponds, like he said, the ponds are just not worth nothing. And for me to bring my children up, and now my grandchildren, to have to live with the solar panels, it's just not right. And for the impact that it's putting on the wildlife, it's just, to me, it's not worth it. And I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it not even be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Was there anyone else?
Yes. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I wanted to take this opportunity to speak to you as one of the contributing landowners to this project. I'm all for it. As well as that, I'm also one of the adjoining landowners that will be affected by this property that will not be in the project. I think it's a good thing economically for this county. I think our taxes are too high now, and anything we could do to keep these taxes from going up again, I'm all for it. This property is rural, as Mr. Michaud has already mentioned. It's rural property. As a matter of fact, if you look at the soil map for Pennsylvania County, that, a lot of that land, most of it... map for Pennsylvania County, that, a lot of that land, most of that land, is considered marginal for growing pine trees. Not worth anything for anything else. It's rocky, poor soil. As a matter of fact, 200 acres of it was planted in pines in 1978, 44 years ago. And it's been thin one time in 44 years. That's not much return on your money for the county in property taxes. Whereas, to rezone this property commercial, the assessment of it will go so much more, and plus what he's already mentioned, the $9 million that they're paying up. It's a good thing for this county, and I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak to this case?
Judy King.
Judy King?
Mm-hmm.
Glad to have you.
Good evening. I live on Wyatt's Road, which is one of the roads that will be connecting to everything. And I just want to speak that I have children, they have friends, they're boys, they love to hunt, fish. It's going to take a big impact on a lot of the hunting area around there. A lot of the farming, they're growing up, riding fullers, things like that. I know it's a good thing for the money part for the county, but just to look at it and what your children are going to be left with, it's very sad. It is ugly. And I just want to state that we are not in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Ginger Shotwell, and I live on Wyatt's Road also, and it will be right around me. I've been there for 50 years on that farm. I hate to see what it's going to do to the farms around me. And I thought that agricultural zoning was to protect agriculture land in our counties. And we're losing so much agricultural land, not only in the county, but over the state. Where are we going to get our food and fiber in so many years if we don't protect some of our farm and forestry?
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you mind stating your name again for the record?
Ginger Shotwell.
Ginger Shotwell. Thank you.
We have a tendency to slur that last one.
Anybody else? All right. Come on forward, sir.
Yeah, I'm a trans-
State your name again.
Mike Morano.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm a transplant to Virginia about 10 years ago, you know. And I'm from New England, and I kind of watched what happened. I watched the way it grew. I watched the way it was destroyed. I did, one of the reasons I'm here, one of the reasons I'm in Virginia is because I used to fly small airplanes around the country. And when I flew over this section of the country 20 years ago, I looked down, and I said, my God, what a pretty piece. I mean, the only place I compared it to was Western Kentucky. I said, that's a pretty piece. I got to tell you, I'm curious here, who likes the aesthetics of a solar farm?
I don't see a lot of hands.
You know, really don't. I also am an engineer, I'm an aerospace engineer, and the benefits of it, they're short, 3%. You know, you can do all you want, but this whole thing that's like Chuck says, it's all going to happen anyway. It's like trying to stand in front of a Mack truck heading down the highway. You know, that's the way everybody wants to go. It only provides 3% electricity, but you're going to destroy. I also think you're going to see in 25 years, you're going to see deserted solar farms, because technology's going to change. I'd like to see what happens to all these thousands and hundreds of thousands of acres in the amount of time. Don't think it's going to be a great thing. I don't agree with it. But, you know, it's like trying to, it's electric. Anyway.
Thank you, sir. Dan, I wanted to give you the opportunity to speak to any of those concerns that have been raised.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Starting with some comments around subsidies perhaps, or tax credits coming from Washington, all energy sources are direct beneficiaries of tax credits, if it's fossil fuels there, or coal. Typically, those tax credits are when those fuels are produced. So it's very, it's not quite accurate to say that solar projects are only economic because of tax credits. There's tax credits across all energy. And as far as the prices go, Dominion's last approved rate increase from the State Corporation Commission was seeking approval for adding $14 per month to Virginia ratepayers, electric bills, because of higher gas prices. That's $14 per month. The last round of procurement was approximately 800 megawatts of solar, and that was expected to increase people's electric bill by 38 cents per month. So the more we bring renewables into the energy mix, we will see the benefits on our bill. As far as wildlife goes, we're proposing to fence off 450 acres of solar panels within 1,555 acres of parcels strung together. The fences are designed to allow for wildlife corridors, so wildlife is able to pass through the acreage outside of the fence line. Where the traffic goes, the traffic management plan is scrutinized by the planning department prior to approving the site plan. So they, we work with them to find the most optimal routes to minimize impact on the community. One gentleman who's surrounded by solar panels, I'm not familiar with the project, but if he's, if he's, if those panels have been there for four years, I would say that the industry has come a long way in Virginia, and we've learned, and in particular, the solar ordinance here has become more stringent for good reason. I know the Climax project has been controversial, and everyone's learned a great deal from that. We avoid sensitive habitat, so when we start to develop these projects, we have wildlife scientists and experts review our areas for sensitive habitat. If anything is found, it adjusts our construction schedule, so we need to, so right now, the northern long-eared bat was recently added to the list of endangered species. And so if you have bat habitat on your site, you can only clear trees during a certain period of the year to avoid destroying their hibernaculum. I, if I could pull up the presentation one more time, there were some comments around the view shed, and seeing the facility from all angles, we have a view shed analysis that shows the view impacts of the facility with and without the screening. So we, I mentioned a few times, we have the benefit of very mature timber on most of our parcels, so we will not have to plant our screening in most locations. Where we don't have screening, we will have to plant, but most of the property is covered by mature timber. So the view shed analysis, this is what it looks like. So the red is representative of the percent of the project, which would be, or the percent of the panels which would be viewed from that location without any screening. So the red is approximately, it's an upper limit of around 20%. So they would see, you know, 20% of the panels from that view shed with no screening. With screening, you cut the visibility down to near zero across all of the project. So this is a really, really good site. We work on a lot of sites. It's not fun to try and propose a site that has view shed impacts and, you know, panels close to road frontage. But we're confident in this site and our ability to hide these solar panels. 450 acres of solar panels fenced in within a larger footprint of 1,555 acres. There was a question about runoff and how we keep it out of Straightstone Creek. And if it's okay with y'all, I'd like to invite Sam Sink, who is here as an expert in construction, erosion, and sediment control, to address that question, as well as how we deal with erosion and sediment control on construction projects.
Good evening. My name is Sam Sink. Get this microphone right here, okay? So just want to give you a brief overview of how we approach our design, construction, with regards to stormwater. We do take this very seriously, and I think the questions are valid and warranted when it comes to anything related to stormwater and runoff. So where Strata starts is we start every site with an evaluation. We don't just take information that may be provided to us by other developers. We do the work ourselves. We hire consultants with very specific scopes of work that come from years of learning about, you know, our product and our construction techniques, to understand the geology, the hydrology, and every aspect of the site that makes it unique. We have built on many different types of land. We've done projects on historic agriculture that was row crops, timberland, both in the lowlands of eastern Virginia and in some of the highlands, in areas with a lot more topography, in areas with different types of watersheds. So we take all of that information early on, and we develop plans that are very specific to the site, with a focus on drainage areas and how we're going to control that runoff. And we try to minimize the amount of runoff that will go to any specific stormwater measure, right? So generally speaking, we're going to take about 20 acres as a maximum that we would treat with any single pond. So if you looked at a site that Strata developed versus a site from maybe another developer, you'll see a lot more stormwater facilities. And the intent there is to reduce the risk and the instances of where that water is actually leaving the site, to just make sure we have more control. So that's a little bit about our overall engineering process. Pennsylvania County is not new to solar development. You've gone through different types of reviews. You know that your plan review has to be consistent with the state, and the way that we develop these sites and the prescriptions that we put in there for means and methods follow all the regulations of DEQ. The important thing about the construction sequence is following the order of operations. So when we get into a site, a site like this, that has a lot of timber on it, we're going to go through and do all of the perimeter controls. We're going to focus on working from the edges inward. We're not going to open up more land than we can control, so we're going to put in a certain amount of silt fence every day. Once the silt fence is in, we're going to focus on our basins. And once a basin is in, and we've applied a first-pass stabilization, whether through matting or some type of a application like a hydromulch, then we will begin the upland disturbance. In doing that, we create a lot of control. We are also required, as you may be aware, to focus on different types of reporting and inspections with regards to SWIP. So every four days, we're going to go through, we're going to do inspection of all of our facilities. We're going to look for any type of deficiencies. And that's part of our quality control process that is mandated by the state, but Strata does with a lot of rigor, in order to make sure that we are looking for vulnerability, making sure we're timely in our response, and ultimately preventing runoff into sensitive areas. As the site develops, and we get into the closeout phase, one of the questions that was asked earlier is, will these facilities be here long-term, the ponds in particular? And the answer is yes. And the reason that we do that is because we've learned the hard way through other projects, that if you try to close out some of these facilities and go to maybe a level-spreader technique, you've got an area that's very well-established, that has a good track record of not producing runoff, and then you actually disturb that area and put in something that isn't as good at handling sediment, right? So we've adopted practices used by VDOT for dried attention ponds. You see them all along the edge of the road. Once they're established, they have a good track record of working. And so that's a little bit about our process. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's all we have. Thank you, Dan. Thank you. All right, at 10 o'clock, we are ready for a motion. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, in the case of S-23-002 for Hillendale Solar, I would like to make a motion that we do recommend to the Board of Supervisors that this project be approved.
Motion by Mrs. Henderson.
With conditions?
Yes, with all conditions listed.
List about staff?
About staff.
Motion by Mrs. Henderson is there, second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Oaks. Please cast your votes. Let the record show, six yes, one no, one absent. Motion carries. Old business.
Real quickly, we have our next biweekly, or bi-monthly meeting for the zoning ordinance update Thursday, the 9th, and that's going to be at 2:30 in this room. If you can make it, please do. That is all the old business that I have.
Any new business?
We only have one case for next month.
Well, isn't that great?
Yay!
On that positive note, we will adjourn.